Okay. Six twenty-nine, we'll start. I called to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, July, July eighth, twenty twenty-five, meeting number eighteen ninety-nine. We are at the John Dealey Room at the Town Hall, and we also live via Zoom. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, due to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got you around this time of year? Okay. Moving on. Establish a core, and we have four regular members and one alternate Wayne. I'll ask you to sit in on any voting tonight.
Good.
Thank you, sir. Added agenda items? None? Legal notice? None? Uh, this is the public participation, participation, meaning, uh, part of the meeting. Anybody? Anything they want to say? That is not on tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am. State your name for record.
Jeff. I'm sure.
Thank you.
Nice lady that has a gem and personal shop in the Pasco Plaza. Her name was Elise. And, uh, of course, nobody knows she's in there because you can't put a sign out. She didn't even sign out, and she was told to take it down. So she has moved on. From my look.
You're in the Pascal Plaza, you said?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Just famous to me that on Route five, you should be allowed to have a sign. No. And she lived, she came here because she was close to her family. So everything's working out well.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Brooklyn. I'm going to speak loud because recent videos have shown that the audience voice doesn't get picked up very well. Not your fault. It's the way it is. So. Uh. You have two business quarters. Basically. Two five, one forty. Two five, one forty should be designated absolutely as a hundred percent business quarters regardless of any residences that may exist because their grandfathered in. It's a non-issue. And the only way we can do anything to support businesses in those areas is to have this in a district we claim is for business. We have a problem with signs. The third one problem. We've lost a business because they couldn't put out a sign, so they couldn't do business. Totally ridiculous. We have issues of people putting up signs that don't meet the regulations because they need to, and then they have to take them down. They're losing business. That's not smart. I don't understand the benefit to the town. I think our sign regulations need extreme work, and they need to be localized, not general.
So, so, Mr. Taki, that is on the agenda? Tonight?
No, it is not.
It is.
No, the public has no access to the data about that item, so therefore, none of the justice is possible.
So it's all online, I'm sure?
No, it is not. Been there. None of the information you have, your package, is online for that purpose.
As we're developing regulations to put forth.
Yeah, none of that information about it is available.
So, 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 settle down. I can all.
We're trying to change regulations.
Trying to work on that. So they're in that process. We'll, we'll let you speak.
So, no, I want to do it now. So, uh.
Okay, go ahead. I'll give you a few minutes. Go ahead.
Something was brought up in the last meeting with our zoning enforcement officer about regulations on blinking signs or motion signs. Which is another poor situation. Uh, because we have, the high school has a constantly changing sign on a state highway. Where other point fire department has a constantly changing sign on a state highway. And it doesn't seem to be a distraction for anybody. Therefore, if a car dealer had a sign, it wouldn't be any more distraction than those. The point being is those have to be taken into consideration in sign regulations, and they're not being taken into consideration, anything that's been presented. So that's my case, and next meeting I'll bring it up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody online? Have anything to say that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay? So we go to approval minutes. So approval minutes for June tenth, twenty twenty-five. Any corrections? Additions? Anything?
Stating I was not present.
Abstention?
I did not see anything that needed changing.
Hey, if that's the case, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Make a motion?
Do you see anything, Stacy? Wayne? Or was it the?
Anne can't make it because she wasn't here.
No, 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 that's just before I was going to make a motion. I figured I would make sure everybody had a chance to look and
motion to approve the minutes.
That's right.
I'll make a motion to approve the Tuesday, June tenth meeting eighteen ninety-seven minutes as presented.
Motion made by Dave. Is there a second? Second by Stacy? Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Same sentence?
I'm abstaining.
In abstance. Okay, so that takes care of those minutes. Now any approval of minutes for June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five? Any corrections, edits? Typos?
I noticed line twenty-one. There should be a comma after Chairman Kowalski. And before Jim Thurston, I did not see a comma there.
That.
I'll add on line one hundred on zoning enforcement officer. I'd add R after office. Thanks. And I was confused by line one.
It's two ten.
It says sewage, light, power, transit, and other purposes. And then there's this word project capitalized there. And then it says the property owner, Mr. Mark Kay. I don't understand what project is. I think I would strike it unless somebody understands what the word project.
This was the land that was trying to be donated to the town.
I don't understand.
They were reading.
With Mark Kay with the applicant. That's all we had.
Right.
Probably owner.
Okay. Just like one eighty-five.
He destroyed.
I.
Project.
I think, but I, I just don't understand if that related to the quotes or I don't understand why the word project is there.
I think you're right. I think it should be struck on because before in the quotes, they were reading this that they were referring to the statue.
Destroyed the word products. Okay, anything else, Anne?
Nope, that's it for me.
Everybody's all good. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, meeting eighteen ninety-eight. With the typos we discussed corrected.
Motion made by Anne. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All who are in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, sorry, one second, Stacy. Sorry, I didn't see your hand out. Okay. You see the application? There was one. PZ twenty twenty-five dash fifteen owner applicant Railroad Enterprises LLC slash UW Realty seven LLC is requesting a site plan review for construction of a hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred square foot industrial warehouse building. An associate site plan improvements located at sixty-eight Newbury Road, map ninety-three, block nineteen, lot zero zero six. Zone is M one. Okay. Performance bonds, actions permits, road extensions, app, road acceptance. There's none. Continued public hearings? None. New public hearings? None. Old business? Case, give me right down to new business. PZ twenty twenty-five, that's thirteen owner applicant M. Is it Makuta?
Makuta.
LLC Fred Kuda is requesting a modification of approved site plan dated five twenty-eight twenty-five. Advocate is adding a phase one building addition, six thousand two hundred forty-six square feet, and a phase two addition of nine thousand three hundred sixty square feet. Expansion of the gravel storage area behind the southern building located at four New Park Road, map twenty-two, block nineteen, lot ninety-nine, zoned M one. Floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. All right. For the record, Timothy Coon, professional engineer with J.R. Russo and Associates located here in East Windsor. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, uh, Makuta LLC and Fred Kuda, who's the managing partner. We're here for a site plan modification. Um, he currently owns the property out at four New Park Road, which is highlighted in pink here on my exhibit. It's an eleven point four acre parcel in the industrial park off of Park Road and its own industrial. It's surrounded by industrial and commercially zoned land as well. There are two existing buildings located around the property. I will refer to one as the north building and one is the south building. The south building was a more recent construction um, in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. I believe we were in there for a site plan for that. And these are currently, uh, it's the location of Blake Equipment or, uh, Blake Group. Different names of the business. In addition to the, to the buildings, uh, there is existing gravel storage currently out behind uh, the south building, and there's an existing storm water management system which takes and collects the runoff from the parking lot and impervious areas and directs it to a stormwater management basin, which is located on the, uh, the eastern side of the parking lot, which discharges into an existing pond site. So there's, that's the existing drainage system that's out, is out there. It's designed and installed in that twenty fourteen development. What is being proposed is a two-phase addition. The first phase will include a six thousand two hundred and forty-six building addition to the northern building, which is shown here in the kind of the brown, orange is brown. Um. In addition, the yellow is going to be an expansion of gravel, which will include an expansion of the gravel storage area um, to the rear of the south building, as well as the installation of gravel around the side and back of the addition to provide access to. There's going to be some pipe storage on racks back here. So we're expanding the gravel back there. In addition to, uh, we will be adding some, some drainage, some yard drains and piping to collect the runoff from these new impervious areas and direct it through our treatment system and our stormwater management basin. And we are proposing a slight expansion of the stormwater management basin, as shown here in green, uh, in order to accommodate the additional impervious coverage. That's, uh, the result of our development. Well. And finally, as part of this, there is an existing berm, um, located out behind this, and we are going to take and reconstruct that berm, um, to push this area back a little bit to provide for our, uh, additional storage area, and uh, we don't want to get, have to truck the stuff offsite. So we're reconstructing the berm along the southern and closer to the western property lines there. And then the phase two of the addition in the future will simply be a, a nine thousand three hundred and sixty square foot addition um, off of the western and north sides of the phase one addition. Uh, most of it will cover the area that would be grabbed. That's part of the gravel access now, so. But there will be a, a little additional impervious because we're extending a little further north than the gravel. Um, however, the the stormwater management expansion that is being completed as part of phase one takes that into account. So we won't have to do any additional work uh, when they do the, the phase two addition. Um, there's other utilities for the additions will come through the existing building. There's nothing new other than the drainage, which I discussed. Um, no additional lighting, no additional parking. Um. And if you've been out there, you will know that these additions are not visible from anywhere. You can't even see it from the street on New Park Road. It's going to be out back behind the existing northern building. We did, I do have elevations. This will be, it's being an industrial building. The addition, the plan is just to have, um, um, metal building wall panels and a metal standing seam roof. Uh, the, they will try to match the colors of the existing build. But again, there's, it's, there's no visibility, um, so it's not going to be visible from anywhere that anybody can see. We have been to inland wetlands. We did receive their approval. Um, we've also addressed all of the town engineers' comments. Um, I did see Ruth Ann's memo to you. She did do a, a parking summary for you. Thank you very much, Ruth Ann, and determined that there appears to be adequate parking. I just want to add that the existing northern building right now, there is, um, in the calculation, there's a lot of office space. The majority of that office space is currently vacant, so there's plenty of parking out there. There's all kind of parking right now, so. I just wanted to point that out. And it's pretty straightforward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I'll start at that end of the table. Wayne, you have anything?
I'm one of the first.
No.
Okay, so let's just talk about the parking just real quick since it's mapped out for us. Thought there's ninety existing spots and parking required is ninety-four. So showing this gets to full use, um, where would you put the other four more additional parking?
Yeah, I didn't think about that because I didn't notice it. And actually, we would be able to add four spaces back in the storage.
In the gravel storage area?
We would utilize that or up against the building. There's, there's plenty of area that's current gravel now where we could grab a few more parking spaces if we had to.
I don't anticipate that we will. Um, I don't know if he's ever going to refill that office space that he has in there. He may convert it to another warehouse use or something that has less of a parking car in.
Um, Dave, is y'all set?
I'm good. Yep, thanks.
Okay, uh, I have a couple of questions. Uh, wall packs for lighting outside of the building, both around it and in the back, where we're adding temporary for pipe storage if people are traveling back there.
The only thing they would have back there would be, uh, can lights above the doors. We're not, we're not planning on any site lighting to extend any distance away from the building.
Worried about any security, not worried about anybody?
No.
Working late at night? Time changes?
He's not posing any additional lighting at this time, so.
Now, as he, but as we're traversing with people, unloading that pipe, got somebody on fork trucks unloading that pipe, driving it around.
It would be done during the day. If it's, if it's dark back there, they're not going to be able to, to do it.
It's an house.
Okay.
You've also done?
Yeah, the lighting was my big thing.
Worried about that. Here's another second. Anne?
I'm happy to see industrial, music and in industrial parks. That's what the zone is for. With the questions or issues.
Okay, yeah, I too, I, I agree with Anne. I'm glad they're staying in town and they're putting addition on the building. Um, I would like to see a couple of wall packs on phase one. I mean, it's not really a big, big deal.
Um. Yeah, I've been certainly suggesting for them, you know, I don't know what you typically want as far as, because I, I don't believe, I don't know currently.
What's in the back of that building?
If the wall packs there are not to the outdoor storage, but.
Oh, I mean, I understand. I get on phase one, you don't want to put wall pack in the building. You're going to put on the side. This, this side towards me.
On the side.
Yeah.
Outside.
Yeah. They threw a couple of wall packs over there to light that up. I mean, we could, get a condition of approval without work.
I, I don't think I'd be opposed to that. Man, we don't even know when phase two is going on right now. Like I said, this, they had these ideas. These plans went in at fourteen and fifteen. And they never did anything in twenty fourteen with the two buildings. So you don't know when both of these phase one and phase two is, are going to be done. I think if you're putting a couple of wall packs.
Yeah.
There's a difference between two and all packs is negligible.
Yeah.
If, well. I would say if, if you feel strongly about it, you could make it a condition of approval. I'm not certain via the regulation that there's a really a requirement for wall packs off that side of the building. It's, it's, it, this isn't a parking area. It's not, it's just, it's basically outdoor storage area. I don't believe that there's any necessary, thing necessarily in the regulations that says you must provide lighting for that. He could certainly provide it if he determined there was a need, and then if it was a significant lighting, he'd have to come back here and put it there. Well. If, if, if you feel strong, I don't, it's not a big expense to put a couple of walls up there. I'm sure that if he was here tonight, he'd probably agree to it.
Um. Yeah, I'd like to see a couple, just a couple of wall packs up on that side, or even one. I'm just making a condition of approval on number seventeen. Add, I don't know what side is that, south side? What side is that?
Would it go there or would it go here on?
It's going to be the south side.
Yeah, south side on, on. Yeah.
By here, by the point.
Yeah. There. So I tell, I'm glad that he's come to town. I'm glad he's putting his issue on. We're happy to keep him. You know, spending money in town.
Great idea, definitely.
Nobody really knows where his property is even at. Unless you, unless ninety-eight percent of town has no idea what his place even is.
All right.
Unless you go down a side road to a side road and get lost.
Yeah. Take the wrong turn.
And that's why I kind of was saying the wall packs is no, you know. It's dark back there. People go back there and who the heck knows who's going to get.
No, no, who's hiding back there? That camper van that's always back there.
Besides that, I, I have no problem, but I think it's, it's, it's a great project. So. All right, does anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Sounds good.
I guess we'll go right into, uh, motion to approve.
It's a motion to approve PZ twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, the site plan modification at Ford and Park Road to add a building addition to phases. A one building addition and a phase two building addition, and then expansion of the gravel storage area behind the southerly building. The approval is granted in performance with the reference plans, as may be modified by the commission, and the following conditions. The conditions are in a memo um, dated July one, twenty twenty-five to the commission from the town planner. But we are going to add a new condition five under conditions which must be met prior to submit all final plans. Which will say um, the applicant will add wall pack lighting on the south side of the new building. And then we'll renumber five through sixteen to be six through seventeen.
Is that worth your, Ruth Ann? Okay, motion is made by Anne. Is there any discussion? But I just want to say for the record that the town engineer did sign off on this. So that was covered. Um, motion made by Anne. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. All who are in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We're into other business. Commissioner feedback on draft sign regulation revision. Yeah, floor is yours. Thanks, Tim.
Night. Great night, Tim. See you, bud.
The last meeting, um, Danielle, you changes that she, um, was proposing in the sign regulations. And as she had promised to provide you with the comment um, version. And so, um, we wanted to have the opportunity to commissioners to provide any feedback you might have on what he's presented so far for provisions.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments? What, Anne?
Um. I think um, seriously, what Pat said about a business not being able to have any sign, so I'd like to hear Danielle's, um, yeah, whatever happened there and why that happened. I also agree that Route five and Route one forty are different animals than other parts of town. And I find, um, it a little bit hard to follow in that it says the sections shall apply to all businesses and all zoning districts. And then in your applicability of signs. Guys, help me find in the definitions that assign only um, it's in chapter two. Yeah, it says it's for any commercial. Right, so, um, I kind of get to what's a business, what's commercial. Um. It gets a little bit difficult when, if the Girl Scouts are selling cookies, is that commercial? To me, it's not, but it's not really defined. So it's I guess the theory that we talked about is it would not apply to I'll say nonprofit community oriented activities. But somebody else reading this at a future time may not come to that conclusion. I also take to heart something Dave said last time, that having different rules for the town than for businesses. Um.
Not a way to go.
I, I don't know if it's not a way to go. I can explain it.
Yeah, it's not a good look.
So. I kind of disagree with that. Because I think the town, you know, if there's an emergency or whatever, they need to put out information.
Agreed, yeah.
With the sign, that's why we allow digital sounds for the town hall and the schools and, and so if we let everybody have a big sign like that, it would be
butt.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, most towns, most towns just let their town properties, the schools and the town hall do that. Um. It's like you mentioned, the blinking signs, you're not supposed to have blink. If you have blinking signs, if we let that happen, everybody would have a blinking sign.
I agree.
Everywhere. So we have to put some kind of enforcement in just to make it not look like Las Vegas.
Yeah, we were talking about that in the office, uh, this week. And one of the things that we were talking about is a set time. Like message can change. Like it can't be a continuous loop, but like
It's very hard to read them. The only reason I can read the one at the high school is if I'm at the light stopped. I could not read it driving.
Right.
And the only time I could read the one at the fire department warehouse point is if I am parked at Geisler's and look at it. I just, I can't take my eyes off the road to read a long message.
So I might want to handle it. Because nobody can even see them when you're going by, so.
Think, you know, the billboards that are electronic.
Yeah.
Like they don't, they can, I don't know how long they stay on the same, okay, for the message, or they switch, but if they kept switching, you that would be distracting, right?
Yeah. Like the fire department has public safety, like changers, smoke detectors.
I totally get it, and a public service message is different than a for sale message.
So it's, it's a slippery slope.
I think we have to be able to explain that to the public.
So I was here for the last sign regulations, and it was all So I was here for the last sign regulations and it was all over the place. So we had to throw something on the wall and that was before mostly online stuff. Everything is mostly online now. So people so if you go like, if you go away for a weekend, you find a place, most people put it in their phone and they find the place and they got a little sign out front or whatever. You don't need a big road sign to find people anymore.
It's changed a little bit.
Well, if you'll put it in their Google Maps and they drive. My two cents. But we certainly don't want to lose you know.
Business.
Don't want to lose business.
Lose business. Yeah, I mean, most people are online too. So if, if, if you're dependent upon a sign to run your business.
This day and age, that is a little.
That's, that's tough.
Let's just talk about this losing business because you don't have a sign. The business has a sign, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the small signs that are continuously posted out by the road that don't fit the regulations and those are the flag. Yeah, and one of the things that Danielle is proposing is that anybody could have an A-frame a certain size at any day, anytime they want to put out as long as it meets, you know, whatever the setback from the road is or whatnot. To help people with that, like we're open or right and, you know.
The menu is.
Yeah, I get that.
Say, whatever. So that she's adding in.
During business hours.
Yes, during business.
And it has to come down every night.
Every night it goes in.
We post for the bots every night.
Yeah.
Hold it every night. And I yelled at them the next morning.
So, so I, I do agree with like those flags, those flags are, like I said before, they put them on one forty and they have bleepies over there and that guy's put the flags up. That little strip island, there are like six of them and people driving by are looking at the flag and
And the moving man.
And, and there's, you know, people five o'clock going ninety through there and there's accidents all over the place. That's what we're trying to avoid, slight line accidents and and, you know, people taking their eyes off the road.
Yeah.
And I get Dave's point about the, the signs, you know, for the schools, but I think that's you know, public service.
I'm not trying to steer away from the public service sign. Don't get me wrong. Don't get me wrong, but.
Why? It's a different standard.
And if you're okay to see that flashing light while you're driving, why can't I see flashing lights something else? Or it just doesn't feel, it just something's odd there. It doesn't.
But it allows the time and temperature at the bank, which I think that's always been a nice feature, you know, the time and temperature signs.
Well, they just throw down there, they have blinking, like blinking open sign, you're not supposed to have those either. And blinking like that is not supposed to be regulated, supposed to be approved. So it's a, it's a slippery slope.
As we go looking through, I have a question. What about the signs that are on the roof of a building? Where do those fall into play here? I see no mention of I see freestanding signs and wall signs. What the signs that are?
The ones that are wall signs, they say not to go above.
So Bastale Farm Town Plaza has all the signs on the roofs. So what are our specifications for that? What are regulations for that?
Maybe they're pre-existing, which is why they're just left.
Were added. They're all added. So I'm just curious where that comes into play. I don't see that anywhere else, but Farm Town Plaza.
So Enfield has a lot of those like that. Much different town, obviously, but yeah, but there's.
I know we want to look like them.
No.
That's not. No look of them.
So, correct, correct. Yep, and not trying to discourage anybody from doing that, just again, I see something different there.
Yep, you have to build it.
Yeah, exactly. Somebody's going to say, how can that get, get that happen? Where's the spec for that if you're giving me a spec for everything else? So, not there.
Billboards.
Non-conforming signs.
So these signs, just these regulations cover the entire town of East Windsor, right? Everything.
No, because the way I read it, you're residential, if you put a for sale sign out, it wouldn't cover that. If, if you get a congratulations, you know, my kid Gregory did from elementary school. It's not in residential. Am I right?
It's for business.
Yeah, for business.
Business.
Commercial use.
That is what is commercial, you know.
Right.
Gets tough, but like garden flags that say welcome, it would, you can't go there.
The fellow, the fellow at the package store down here, his name is Paul. He said he put a small sign out there. One day the topic came up and he said he put a small sign on his rail that we're across the street now, we're open. And he was asked to take it down. It's just, what, what does that?
Did that happen?
How long has he been there? I don't know, three years?
Could have been blinking.
I don't know.
Could have been a sign sweep.
Blinking.
He, he was asked to take it down. I was just puzzled about that. Does it make sense to say that Route five and Route one forty are the main roads and we should have maybe a little bit heavier signage information there, you know, allow more than just the residential. Does that make sense?
They do.
I mean, you're, if you're covering a whole town, it means that anybody on the Ellington line can put up the same signs, right?
Oh, they're not.
To be a business.
Well, yeah, you can, you have a barber shop in your basement or something. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just, uh, am I reaching it?
Yep.
So you like go Route five, you see a guy's got one of those, those Arab things, the guy zipping around and it's totally illegal. That's totally illegal.
The Gumby guy.
Him, you know, and stuff like that.
It's a distraction when you're driving.
It works, but.
I'll say, or the big car dealer balloons like you see. And they're waving it. I haven't seen them in East Windsor, but you see them on some car dealer lots where they're just balloons where waving around in the wind.
You know, with sign rates, you gotta put something on, on, on the books or you're going to have chaos. You gotta, and you're not going to make everybody happy. You just, you know.
Yeah.
It's just.
Commercial is different than residential.
Yeah, it's a disaster to touch residential because if somebody had a welcome sign in their garden or a
That's why we change the definition.
Or whatever, you can't go after that.
We gotta try to be, we got to be fair across the whole town, you know, you know what I mean? Just you're just picking one person for whatever. That's why we, Danielle does a good job. I know Danielle does a good job and she's fair. She, she goes across the whole town, the auto sweep and does all that stuff, so it's.
And when she does that, she makes that point of contact. And so it's very easy if things start to drift, if she picks up the phone, they're like, oh yeah, they know who she is.
And she also does the good, the letter saying I'm coming, you know.
Yeah, I, I get it.
Here's the regular.
Yeah.
So it's not, she's trying to get anybody.
It's, it's like
Trying to just get it lined up.
It's like people park on the grass. Again, Terry, how many times we sat here in meetings and people, we proved these buildings, they go, okay, but you, here's your parking lot displays. You can't park on the grass. Well, in the four or five months, they're all parking on the grass. And, and that's a sightline. It should not go off of signs, but the same kind of principle. You, you tell them not to do it and then Danielle goes back out six months later and there's thirty-five people parking on the grass. And I drive up to that room five every day, like, oh, there's another one, there's another one, there's another one. And they sat there and they swore us, we're never going to park on the grass. Yeah, I'll park on the grass. So it's kind of the same thing with signs. You tell them, you know, you give them, this is what you can do and they'll push a little more and push a little more and push a little more. And I mean, I get it, they're trying to get business in, but you gotta put something out there someplace.
Yep, but I kind of agree with whoever said it, that in this day and age, do you really come because somebody has a sign out or, you know, I guess you do if you're in transit and you're looking for a McDonald's for lunch or whatever.
Or a deli or.
You need to know it's there.
Me and my wife, well.
It's thank you.
Yeah, it's probably not like the purpose of your trip, but it's because you're out, you saw a sign, maybe you'll stop in, you have to be there. So it's like the chance.
Secondary. I get it.
While they're still out, oh, you know, hungry, oh.
I, I get it for that. I don't get it for a car dealer.
So most people have their signs in their buildings and they
Are now.
And then they have their A-frame signs.
We didn't, well.
Right, so what do you want to go with this?
Take your feedback back to Danielle, the, talk through it and
Wait till Mike gets back. I mean, I said, I think we're okay with all the A-frame signs during the day, put them, put them out, bring them back in.
Those don't count as temporary signs, where the temporary signs have a
Yeah.
We restrict that, yeah.
So the lady Pasco wants to put an A-frame sign out, she could during the day, take it off and bring it back in. While it's not in a sightline or the wrong place. But, you know, like you said, people, like, like you said, Stacy, they go out for a day trip and they see a secondary sign, like me and my wife went to a winery on Sunday in South Glassbury, had no idea it was, put it in the GPS, went there and they had a little sign that says winery here. GPS takes you right to the door and that was it. But there was secondary sign someplace else. It said, hey, maybe it's out for lunch.
Right, exactly. Because when you're out and you see a restaurant.
So I thought the idea of the A-frames, which is nice. All right, so we'll keep working on that.
Hey, you wanted to come back. There was a thing in here. We close this up. As I did a on the last page. About enforcement, the last section.
Yeah.
So the removal of signs section, we've got this change in there, ten to fifteen days notice, the officer will give ten and then we have five is the red. So we want to switch to fifteen days notice writing. Okay, and then a little bit later, the abandoned signs. Should that be fifteen days notice down there? It still says ten. Or do you want to go fifteen and ten?
Okay.
Make it universal. I mean, you
Somebody will say they thought it was Thank you. And they will think it's the opposite because they won't remember that there was a go fifteen for both.
Okay. So we'll might, we'll come back and come back to that. Okay.
Another, before we leave it, it says no sign shall be now on a utility pole for three. On what's appearing recently is they're fixing them to stop signs on traffic signs. Be like plastered, no.
Yeah, we do all this enforcing. Do we do any rewards for people who adhere to the
He does send
I, I didn't get one. They didn't go on.
Do they get extra recognition somewhere?
So thank you.
You know, you can read the, you can read the
Extra recognition somewhere in East Windsor's, you know, Better Business Bureau.
Because we did it right.
Gold stars are signed in. An extra post on Instagram or
We do everything online. We don't do anything, we don't do anything for signs, really. I got one little sign, you got a sign and
Yeah.
People drive in because you have a
No, no, no.
People are coming for two reasons. You don't want people coming in because of a sign.
Nobody's driving out for a gas turbine by sky.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even get that. No.
Look at everybody's calling you Gleason.
Yep, I get that.
No public restroom sign?
Yeah.
I was asking for that either.
There are exemptions. I have vehicles.
Yeah, Wayne's.
Wayne, you got something else, Wayne?
The exemptions, he wants to vehicles are the big.
Two dot eleven eleven. Signs on registered motor vehicles. What about unregistered motor vehicles?
Registered motor vehicles. Right, if the sign is painted, protesting, the body is exempt, right? So if you're going to have a sign that's a unregistered motor vehicle, you're going to get a
That's the thing, you're selling something that's not going to be registered.
This is using the car and sign.
Oh, you're the sign.
Like painting the sign onto the car for a business.
So I saw a subway, people got creative and they parked the downstate it, they had a fan with a subway sticker on it, a magnet on it, they park in there, leave there all the time.
It says registered.
Yes.
What if you have an unregistered vehicle? You can't do it.
Well, you should be on the road.
Then park it.
There you can, you
Put it on a trailer.
This.
Park in the parking lot. Yeah, you got to reach, you're reaching here. Lord knows.
Find somewhere to get rid of that.
Attract the trailer body, you're not going to
Maybe just take out the registered and just say signs on motor vehicles. What if you just say?
You want?
Okay. Some of all these unregistered advertising cars everywhere.
It's a little thing, but it does mean a big difference.
I see what you're saying, yeah. I was saying just no signs on vehicles at all.
But if it's their business and they
Well, not like no sign of vehicles that are left there overnight.
Yes.
Going during, I guess.
A company car and you're good at your business and it says Connecticut Water Company. I'll give you a lot.
Yeah, I, I had a friend who lived in a condo that used to have to put a matching color magnet sheet over.
That's, that's a little bit ridiculous.
He had to do it.
Common sense prevailed. I mean, if the guy's getting, all my vans are lettered and I drive them.
Yep.
Whatever. I mean, that's if it's at your business and it's your lettered vehicle, that's
It should be allowed.
That's allowed.
It'd be allowed, exactly.
Yep, you're wrapped with a, with a thing that says safe lock or whatever it is, that you drive it to work and you, it should be okay. During the day, it's fine.
You're parked at night after hours. That could be where you're, if you're not allowed to bring the commercials.
Because you're driving it.
Yeah, yep.
Sometimes what I do is I put it on a trailer which is registered.
What do you put on it?
A car.
No.
What are you writing on it?
You know it?
You put a sign.
It's on the car, yeah.
What sign is it?
It does the for sale sign.
What kind of car?
What's the sign saying?
Sign you put on the car.
For sale.
Oh, yeah, that's not what it says.
I put it, I put it on, it's not registered.
Well, this is something about advertisement.
I was just talking about wrapping the car with an ad, like a billboard on a moving
Like a bus. Where whoever
You can put a for sale sign on a car, like wrap, laughing.
Something with this is, so this is registered.
It's not a for sales, where's the for sale sign covered?
It's not.
So, no.
It's not part of a commercial.
It's an individual who does have a business, so it's personal.
All right, we all set with that? Moving on. Correspondence, none? This meeting? None? Executive session? None? Uh, intended motion for adjournment?
Making motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion adjournment made by Stacy, the second.
The second.
Wayne got the second.
Second by Wayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Terry, meeting adjourned. Seven oh what?
Eight, seven fifteen.